Seat warmer.
Dana, are you back there to keep the ball in line? Dana? Dana? Are you back there to keep them all in line?
That's a heavy lift.
I know. Just checking. Good evening. We'll call the meeting to order if you would please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Dani, would you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Wales.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember De Corsi.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
And Councilmember Wagner.
Thank you. We will start this evening with a proclamation with that rowdy group back there. And so if I might ask all of the SirOptimists to please come forward. We have a proclamation this evening, counsel, for 70 years of service. Not any one of these individually. I just want...
Well, combined.
Combined, it's far more than 70, but not any one individually. I just want to go on the record that I am not saying that about any one of you.
Thank you.
All right. So Mayor's proclamation. Whereas 70 years ago, a group of community-minded Auburn business and professional women came together with the idea of forming a local SirOptimist Club. And on October 17th, 1947, SirOptimist International of Auburn was chartered. And whereas from the beginning and throughout their history, Auburn SirOptimist Club has created, nurtured, and supported organizations, projects, and events that support the community, the region, and the world. And whereas SirOptimist International of Auburn supports education as a pathway to economic independence and was the first service club to endow a scholarship fund at Green River College. Nice. The club has awarded thousands of additional dollars over the years to women with hopes and aspirations for their future through the Live Your Dream and other award programs. And whereas SirOptimist has raised awareness and supported the work of agencies that deal with domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, housing and homelessness, women's health, and the environment locally and worldwide. And whereas SirOptimist has created and collaborated signature projects such as Medic One, the first emergency medical services outside of Seattle, Washington Women's Employment and Education location in King County, Girls of Promise, a leadership program for middle school girls, and partnered with the YMCA and Auburn School District, Kids Dawn, a kids' club for children impacted by domestic violence with Domestic Abuse Women's Network, Dawn, plus the club's own signature project, Shelter for Sisters, a fund administered by the Auburn Food Bank to provide housing assistance to women in need. And whereas SirOptimist members participate in other community organizations and churches, serve on various boards, commissions, committees, and advisory groups, adding their experience and perspectives to the local issues. And now therefore I, Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim that October 17th, 2017, be dedicated as SirOptimist Club of Auburn's 70th anniversary in the City of Auburn and give special recognition and our sincere appreciation for the outstanding work that all club members have provided throughout the 70 years of service to our community and the citizens of Auburn dated the 16th day of October, 2017. Who is going to receive the proclamation? Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for all the members from SirOptimist that came here tonight. You know, SirOptimist is a coined term that actually means best for women. And, but I hope when each of you think about SirOptimist, you think about influence and you think about impact. Influence meaning all these women who, we have busy lives with families and businesses and our other commitments in our community choose to give their time to SirOptimist. And when I think about impact, I think of all the items that Nancy just mentioned. Our impact on our community with Medic One, the impact on our community with Shelter for Sisters. And so I hope when each of you think of SirOptimist, you think best for women in Auburn. Thank you.
Thank you. So would everybody like to introduce themselves? And I mentioned in there that most of you served on boards and commissions or other community organizations. Would you like to share as you introduce yourself? I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know, maybe, maybe if the list is this long, shrink it to this because we could probably be here all night with all of the great work that has been done over the years by this amazing group of women and others. But please, if you'd share your name and some of the great work that you've been doing.
Judy Roland. I chair the Planning Commission. I've been on the Museum Board. I'm on the Cemetery Board. I've been in Chamber of Commerce, Ayr. There's too many, too many to mention, actually, so I won't go any further than that. But best for women, that's what it says on our T-shirts. And we're very proud of all that we do.
I'm Nancy Colson. And I currently serve on the Green River Foundation Board. I'm the President of the Auburn Symphony Board. And I've served on the YMCA Board of Managers since 1992, I think. And I have been on the museum, I was on the Museum Interim Planning Commission that managed the transition from a privately held museum to a joint operation with the city and other things. You know, I'm everywhere.
I'm Cheryl Sully. I think most of you here know me as the retired Senior Center Director. And that was my obviously primary involvement in the city for 30 years. So I think that's enough said.
And I'm Janice Nelson. And I'm the past President of SirOptimist. I served on the Auburn School Board for over 16 years. I served on the Museum Board. I'm currently on the Auburn Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors and on their Executive Committee. And I wanted to say, every woman here has been a past President of SirOptimist. And Cheryl Workman, who'll be talking next, is a current coming in, our President-elect. So you're, this is a... And I wanted to say Judy Roland, she's a former Auburn City Council member and a state representative. So she forgot about that. To say that, anyway, thank you so much.
I'm Cheryl Workman. And I am the President-elect for SirOptimist. I have been a foundation rep for Windermere Real Estate Foundation. And recent, last year graduated from the Institute of South Puget Sound. Leadership.
So as you can see, this is a group of women who, when somebody says, well, how are we going to get this done? You give it to a busy person. I've made that comment a few times lately. You give it to a busy person because you know it's going to get done because a busy person knows how to fit it into their schedule. And these ladies are exemplary in what they do for this community for domestic abuse awareness. Thank you for the purple ribbons that you tied down Main Street for us. Two weeks ago, we had the Domestic Violence Awareness vigil. And it really added to, to the event for us. So ladies, if you would please go forward and accept the appreciation of counsel for the amazing work that you do in our community. Thank you.
See you tomorrow morning.
All right. Next on our agenda this evening is a presentation by Pierce Transit. It's an update by Pierce Transit Commissioner Nancy Henderson. Nancy, welcome.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to come back to your chambers here, beautiful chambers, and share information with you about Pierce Transit. But following the SirOptimist, I feel like a total slacker. So really impressive what they have done. I am one of nine commissioners that are on the Pierce Transit Board. And Nancy Henderson is my name. I'm Vice Chair currently and also on the Executive Finance Committee, which meets separately. We are the Oversight Committee, if you will, for Pierce Transit. And in this capacity, you have kindly chosen me to represent the jurisdictions of Auburn, Stellicum, Ruston, Pacific, Gig Harbor, and Furcrest.
Counsel, you can turn on your screens if you'd like to look at it on the screen at your desk. Or it's your...
Pierce Transit isn't as large as it used to be, but still significantly large. It includes 13 towns and cities within Pierce County. We have Joint Base Lewis McCord included in our area of service. We cover 70% of Pierce County's population. It would be wonderful if we covered 100% of Pierce County's population, but that's what we have at this point. And as far as service by the numbers, this is 2016 information. We have 37 local routes. There's 178 buses. 8.6 million boardings last year. We also, so there's fixed route buses, and then there's shuttle transit. This is for people who are physically not capable of riding on fixed route buses for one reason or another. It is indeed much more expensive, but it takes care of a segment of the population that otherwise would be shut in. And I don't think that would be acceptable by anyone's standard. So there's over 6,000 clients that use Paratransit. There's over 100 vehicles. And almost 350 boardings is what we had in 2016. There's also a van pool. Van pool is a really neat thing. There's 366 vans. And I want to mention that a number of those vans are involved between Auburn and Boeing. Apparently, a lot of people in Auburn are employed by Boeing. And they utilize these vans to carpool and save themselves money and save a lot of congestion on the road in the process. As far as Auburn, I wanted to provide information specific to Auburn. Auburn has a route that is a feeder route to the Sounder Station. And the average weekly, weekday boardings, rather, are 300. Total boardings, 41,142. We have, Pierce Transit has recently changed the times a little bit so that it arrives 10 minutes before the Sounder train takes off. And there are eight outbound trains and, or buses, excuse me, and eight incoming buses to service people in this area. Also, the van pool I mentioned, we have shuttle service for citizens of Auburn. We have something called Caravan. I want to mention it because it may not be familiar to everyone. This is something that was started, I think, about a year ago. And by the way, this is Alex Mathers from Pierce Transit with me. Caravan is where a 501(c)(3) organization submits an application for donation of a van that otherwise we would be losing because of its dated service. We don't get a lot of money for that. And we found that it's actually more economical to donate that van on an organization that then uses that to transport the people that otherwise would be falling on the shuttle service. So it ends up really saving our organization money and making things much more convenient. I think we've given away six so far. But I want the people of Auburn to know about that because there might be really worthy charities in your jurisdiction that could benefit from this.
And so Nancy, does it have to be in the Pierce County portion of our city? Or can it be anywhere in the city?
Good question for Alex.
It can be anywhere in Pierce County.
So only the Pierce County portion of Auburn?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Okay. I should also mention that there are two sound transit routes that service your area. But I am not sound transit. I am Pierce Transit, or representing Pierce Transit. Representing you for Pierce Transit, better said. Pierce Transit has a lot of regional connections. So there are ways to get to KipSAP, King County Metro, Sound Transit, InterCity with Olympia. There's a number of regional express routes. We have a lot of transit centers, park and rides. We have two ferry terminals, one being at the Point Defiance area and the other being in my town of Stellicum. We have connections to Amtrak and Greyhound. There's four Sounder stations. Sounder is just taking off. It's been very popular. And we have so far only the Tacoma Link Light Rail. And we're looking forward to more in the future. I will just say that I've been able to take a bus from my town in Stellicum all the way up to Everett and back because of our regional interconnectivity. I just find that great. So it's interesting how we're funded. Right now, we have local sales tax of 0.6% that goes toward financing Pierce Transit. So that's 6 cents if you pay $10. So it's 77%. It's very dependent upon sales tax. That has unfortunate flip side to it. And that is that in times where we're in recession, as we recently had in 2011, 2012, our income really plummets. And so an agency has to take drastic moves when that occurs. We had to cut service. We had to cut routes. That really is painful for an agency that is there to service the public. And it's very hard for the public. Fares only account for about 13%. Grants, 7%. And the advertising, advertising itself is only actually 1%. And other category is 2%. The good news is that the financial outlook has been really on the upswing. I imagine the City of Auburn has seen that as well with improved sales taxes. You have a lot of businesses. So I'm sure that's been positive for you. What Pierce Transit is doing with this improvement in revenue is that they're taking that and they're putting it back into service hours, where really the bang for the buck is. There are capital needs and those are being addressed. But the main thing for us, for as an agency, Pierce Transit as an agency, is getting people into buses. So to do that, recently, there was a comprehensive route analysis done. A lot of public input. They wanted more frequent bus service and they wanted more weekend service, later on weekends. So recently, the whole network was restructured somewhat to accommodate that. There were 35,000 hours that were added back into service in March and just in September, 10,000 more. So it's very good. Safety, I want to mention this. I think that one factor that inhibits people from wanting to travel on transit is the safety fear. There have been some really good upgrades in safety. But I want to say that we have a dedicated police force. And so when something happens on transit, that call goes to the front of the line by our dedicated police force. And so something that would have maybe taken a while to get attended to is taken care of very promptly. Cameras on buses is very smart and it's been done in the past year. So now there is a recording of what occurs. This is good for our drivers when there's some variance of story as far as what happened on the road or what happened in the bus. And when people know that they're under observation, often their behavior improves a bit. So this has been very, very good thing. Also, we have been selected, our Pierce Transit, I say we because it belongs to all of us, a collision avoidance technology. We're the only one in the country to get this grant. So this is going to be interesting. It's going to be a trial to see if this is very effective. I think it will be a little tough because we don't have that many collisions. So I'm not sure how we'll determine that, but we'll see. There's been some interesting public-private partnerships. One is the Downtown Do Defiance Trolley. That started in the summer of this year. We're going to continue it again one more year because it was quite popular. But it's not just Pierce Transit paying for it. It's really a partnership with businesses who have determined that it's an enhancement to them as well to bring more people via transit to their domain. This might be something that could perhaps be a win for Auburn. I don't know your town, of course, as well as you do. But if there is some event or some type of enhanced activity or business activity that occurs in the summer, would a trolley in any way work for Auburn? Something to think about. The Gig Harbor Trolley that's now in its fourth year, has, going to be in its fourth year, has been very successful. We've seen a steady climb and it's very popular as a summer service. Some other major initiatives, we've provided transportation directly to state fairs, Freedom Fairs, Taste Tacoma, big events. Also, the twin bus that you see in that picture is available for community events and is something that you might want to take advantage of. We've done that in Stellicum. We've had it at our farmer's market. We've had it very popular. Kids won't get out of the bus. They like it so well. Another thing, we have a federal grant on first mile, last mile. And that's an innovative concept of partnering with Uber to have them provide the transportation to a bus or to public transportation for people who otherwise wouldn't have a means of getting there. Electric buses. I drive an electric hybrid car and I'll never go back. I just find it so wonderful. And I'm pretty excited that also Pierce Transit is going to be exploring the possibilities of electric. There should be three buses, I think, next year that will be obtained for this. Most of our buses run on compressed natural gas, which is also very effective and very cheap. It's only about 17 cents per gallon equivalent. Another thing that I think is very nice is that community colleges, specifically, I think it's Clover Park is the first, we hope for others, are providing the students bus passes so that they can get to and from school in a cheaper manner. Another thing is a price pay thing. This has gotten very popular. So if you have a smartphone and you add on this app called Hop Through, you can actually purchase your pass or your daily ticket or whatever, right on the phone. People have been taking advantage of that. SD3, it's been a controversial thing in Pierce County, as you well know. What's coming along the road? We should be getting 60 million in funds toward the high-capacity transit corridor. And that would be basically Pacific Highway, about a 14-mile stretch. There's also 103 million that's coming up for three county studies, Nahomage, King, and Pierce, to look at the prospects of buses going on the shoulder. That will be interesting. And then not until 2030 is Light Link Rail coming to Tacoma. But that's the way that is. Fast Ferry, this is something that you might have seen in the news. This is something that probably will be up for discussion at our Commissioners' meeting in November. But I want to say, it's gotten a little press. The idea sounds on face value good because it would be a way perhaps of getting people quickly from Tacoma to Seattle with no obstructions, with traffic blocks. But there's a lot of details yet to be considered. The expense of it, Pierce Transit has no experience with boats. That's not been our forte. We've used round things that go this way. And does it stop or does it go directly? It could be a money pit. And so the question that will probably be coming up is whether or not we even want to put out the money, possibly 30,000 or more, for a feasibility study to determine if this is a route we want to take. Or if it's so obvious that it's a money hole that is doomed to really financially cripple us or have a huge impact, is that a route we want to go down? So I bring this up because I'm seeking your input on it. And I would love to hear from you, what you think about it. My contact information is here at the bottom. Nancy Henderson or NHenderson@PierceTransit.org. My phone number there as well. Are there any questions?
Counsel, do you have any questions for Nancy? Councilmember Wagner.
Nancy, the 15% fairer recovery against costs. I think that's pretty typical of transit or operations throughout the country, isn't it?
It is, it is somewhat typical. We'd like to see it higher. I mean, a good benchmark would be 18%. I think we've talked about 18%, but it is at 13%. There was a fair increase that we enacted for those taking the shuttle. The people taking the shuttle before were only paying 75 cents a ride. By law, we could actually charge twice as much for someone taking the shuttle because it is much more expensive. It's about $55 a trip compared to about $6 a trip for someone else. So we are trying to put a little bit more fairness into the cost recovery in that manner. Thank you.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Nancy, you mentioned that the trolley service could be rented. Have you guys talked to the mucko shoots about that? Because with all the concerts up at the White River Theater?
That, I don't know that we pursue that. Do you know anything about that?
I don't think so. We're always open to, you know, offering contract service. You know, if they needed more transportation avenues, we'd always be open to exploring it.
It is just because that whole hillside is always so congested during the concerts and everything. And I could see a trolley service be something for them to use. So, okay, thank you.
As an innovative idea. Thank you for mentioning that. We'll, we'll bring that up. We'll follow up on that. Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor. You may have mentioned this, so I apologize if you have. What is the subsidy percentage on your bus activity?
For a person who is taking the shuttle, the operational cost is $55 per trip. For someone who is taking a fixed route, it's about $6 per trip, roughly. Give or take a few pennies. For someone who's taking the van, I think it's about $5. Am I right about that?
The...
The car, the van pool.
Yeah. Well, they pay 100 a month.
Okay. They pay 100 a month.
Yeah. And then the members of the van pool split the cost.
Yeah. So there clearly are subsidies.
So Councilmember, were you asking what the subsidy is for just bus routes? Fixed bus routes?
Well, like as an example, Metro, Seattle Metro, I think they, the subsidy is about 70%.
That's, they said the cost recover, or the fare box is about 17%, right?
So the fare...
So the remainder would be the subsidy.
The fare box recovery right now is about 13%.
13%, yeah.
13%. So it would be, help me with the math, that would be 83%?
87, yeah, 87%.
Which seems very high, doesn't it?
It appears that it's a little higher than Metro, Seattle Metro.
We would like to see it be reduced. And so the more that we can make our buses faster for people, the more that we can arrange for a transit bus to be the medium of choice to get from A to B. Restoring service helps that. Our ridership went down, obviously, when we had to cut service. It was much less convenient. But it's going back up. So whatever changes we can do to accommodate the public will change that. Yes.
All right. Don't see any more questions. Nancy, thank you so much for coming tonight. I appreciate, appreciate both of you being here to answer our questions and to give a great update on what's going on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next on our agenda is Mark Lenquist, our Pierce County Prosecuting Attorney. Welcome.
Thank you. Well, good evening. I'm Mark Lenquist. I'm your Pierce County Prosecutor. It's my job to help keep our community safe. Keeping the community safe is not our only job in the prosecutor's office, but it is our main job. And so I'm here tonight to update you on three of our public safety initiatives. I recognize most of you probably live in King County, but I guess about 15% of your city is in Pierce County. You know, the important part of Auburn there in Pierce County. And criminals, as you know, don't recognize city boundaries. So the things that I'm going to be talking about, the initiatives that have reduced crime in Pierce County, I expect and hope are doing the same here in King County. The three things I want to talk about are, number one, our new High Priority Offender Program. Number two, our elder abuse team. And number three, our gang unit. And I'll start off with our High Priority Offender Program. This is a new data-driven prosecution. We're excited about it. We're excited about it. It's been effective on the East Coast and we are the first on the West Coast to do this. The idea is to focus resources on the small percentage of criminals who are causing a large percentage of the crimes. And, you know, that's not new. We all know it's a small group of bad actors who cause most problems in every context, but especially in criminal justice. What's new is how we're using data and technology and intelligence to identify who these offenders are, tag them in the system, and get them off the streets for long sentences. We just convicted our five-hundredth high priority offender. We are getting sentences that are four times the length of your typical sentence. And when you get one of these career criminals off the streets, you prevent dozens, if not hundreds, of future crimes. Because we're talking about people are, for example, chronic burglars. And again, you can be pretty assured that the chronic burglar isn't stopping at that King County, Pierce County border. So when we're getting these criminals off the streets, we've seen crime go down in Pierce County as a result, and I expect it's going to have a positive impact in King County as well, especially South King County. Second thing I want to talk about is our elder abuse team. In Pierce County, we've become actually a leader in the state when it comes to both the prosecution and the prevention of elder abuse. We are one of only nine counties in the entire country to have recently received an award of nearly four hundred thousand dollars from the Department of Justice. And we're using that money to form a comprehensive approach to elder abuse. So it's our office, law enforcement, adult protective services, bankers, all the stakeholders who can come together and both assist in the effective prosecution of elder abuse, but also prevent elder abuse. Help people be aware of what are the red flags, how do I best protect, you know, my parents, my friends, my neighbors. So if you know of a group that would benefit hearing from us, let us know. We come out and do presentations where we educate people and raise awareness about elder abuse, what it is, how to look out for it, how to prevent it. And I'll take this moment, moment of personal privilege, the gentleman with the camera over there, that is James Lynch. Does anyone recognize him from his days at Q-13? Couple people. Well, he, he worked in television news. Yeah, yeah. He, yeah, thanks, thanks for taking the camera down. He worked in television news for about a decade, a little more than a decade, but a decade at Q-13, and then he decided to come make an honest living.
You were right.
Hey, James, I always get a laugh with that, as a, as a public servant. So James handles communications for our office. And again, if you have a group that you think would benefit hearing from us about elder abuse, let James know. And either I'll be out there or the head of my elder abuse unit will be out there.
So, Mark, just a question.
Sure.
The same one as I asked Pierce Transit. Do you move into King County or would this need to be a group that is in Pierce County?
You know, we've done hybrid groups. I try not to poach too much on Prosecutor Dan Sannenberg's territory, but we have definitely spoken to groups that are a mix of King and Pierce, or a mix of Pierce and Thurston. So yes, if it's one of these groups on the border, happy to come out and talk to them. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
And then the third thing I wanted to briefly update you on is our gang unit. You may remember a few years ago, we did something pretty innovative, which is we used the conspiracy statutes to go after violent street gangs. That was very effective. We did several sweeps of the most violent street gangs in Pierce County. Gang violence, as a result, is down sixty percent in Pierce County. And again, I think that's got to have a positive impact in South King County as well. Because again, when you get these gang bangers off the streets, you're not just reducing crime in Pierce County, you're reducing crime in the region. So those are three of the things that we're working on, that high priority offender program, our elder abuse team, and our gang unit, all making the community safer, but happy to talk about anything else as well while I'm here.
Counsel, does anyone have a question?
And that's great, too. I think I've talked out from.
I think you've done a great job, then, of explaining exactly the top priorities for Pierce County and we appreciate the support in, in getting the violent offenders and the frequent flyers or familiar faces off of the streets so that we are a safer community. We appreciate that.
Thank you. It's our pleasure. Good night.
Good night. All right. We will move on. We have no appointments. Danny, do we have any agenda modifications?
You have distributed prior to the meeting additional information on resolution, sorry, resolution 5322.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. We have no public hearings tonight, so we will move to audience participation. This is the place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the city council on any issue. Those wishing to speak are reminded to sign in on the form provided and keep their comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Anyone like to speak? Yes, please come forward and give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Your Honor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Jeff Oliphant, PO Box 1294, Auburn 98071. I wanted to speak on two topics. The first one is resolution 5322. And if I have time or can come back after everyone else has spoken to speak on resolution 5314, the business improvement area. The garage. If we want to bring folks to downtown, to the Sound Transit Station, or for any other reason, we need to make it easy for them to get here and we need it, and, and once they get here, a place to, to park or do whatever they're going to do. Most folks are coming by car, so we need to find a place to make it easy for them. And the parking garage, whether it be the smaller one we've, I call it the smaller one or the larger one, is a great means to bring people to downtown to either get on the, on the train or to do downtown business. Tonight, you have four sites to choose from for the sounder garage. I'm obviously advocating for site number one because it has the greatest flexibility and also the lowest cost. As far as flexibility of the four sites, it is the only one that has the ability to go larger than the five hundred or so spaces under the Sound Transit mandate. You can go with the five hundred and forty-five net new spaces as shown by Sound Transit or as much as thirteen hundred total spaces in an expanded garage. As to those two options, you don't have to decide anything tonight. That's frankly not before you. All you have to do is select a site as between the four. If you don't choose site one, the consideration, in my opinion, of a larger garage is lost forever because none of the other properties have that as an ability. Lowest cost, Sound Transit estimates that on site one, sixty point four million to achieve five hundred and forty-five spaces. No other site comes close to this number. The budget is sixty million, not sixty point four. Under the analysis they gave you to knock off four hundred thousand dollars, they took off a hundred and twenty-five spaces. It doesn't make sense. That's, if the newspaper says there are a hundred thousand a space, we're talking four spaces, not a hundred and twenty-five spaces. Yes, there's some construction things that can be done, but it makes no sense. We can cut four hundred thousand dollars from somewhere else in the, in that budget or frankly, the city could easily come, I'm sure, find four hundred thousand dollars for a hundred and twenty-five spaces. Anybody would do that. It's nonsense to think otherwise. As far as a larger community garage that we've been talking about, you cannot just, it cannot just be Sound Transit. It has to involve the, the entire community, the city. I'm running out of time. Is that, am I okay or can I keep going?
You need to wrap up quickly because you have already gone past your three minutes.
Okay. If we go with a larger garage, it needs to involve the city as well because it's beyond the Sound Transit mandate and as we've indicated, some of the property is actually owned by the city. I'll stop there if you want. I have, and let others speak, and if I can come back, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record and limit comments to three minutes, please.
Yes, my name is Bob, excuse me. My name is Bob Zimmerman. I'm, I live at 33029 46th Place South in Auburn, up on the West Hill. I would like to speak to you about the, the planning, not planning, but the building Back probably around 2010, our neighbor built a wall, concrete wall, on top of the ground without any kind of embedded footing or, but, foundation, in spite of what the code says that requires everything, whether it requires a permit, be or not. Anyway, this went on and, and at first he said he was going to build a retaining wall, which required a five-foot setback at that time, they told me, and a, and a footing and so on. So he decided to call a fence to get this exclusion. Okay, well, I figured within a few years, when he starts piling dirt against it, certainly there would be some kind of code enforcement. Well, no. The building department came up with more excuses. Eventually, I hired an engineer to make an evaluation. Evaluation said it didn't even meet wind load requirements, let alone seismic, okay? Now, when they did these improvements, the improvements did not meet the standards. I mean, the, the observed activity didn't even come close to the magnitude of the project. I mean, and you can drive, I could drive a steel rod in the ground and prove that this thing didn't meet standards. So anyway, last week, or week before, I guess, on the 28th of, let's see, it's 28th of September, we had a meeting with the mayor and the county, and the staff, and subsequently a visit to the site. And these people have wide latitudes, do not enforce the code, do whatever the heck they want. They're supposed to be trained professionals with high credentials, okay? They're still not admitting, what they did in that meeting was they admitted that there is a requirement that this thing should be safe. Well, it's still not safe and they're still not going to do anything. And it's easy to prove that there's a substandard just with driving a steel rod in the ground and you can get the elevation of the concrete and the fact that it's not there. Okay? Looks like I'm about out of time. But the bottom line is, we need to have some kind of accountability for this. You know, a citizen, they're going on for years with, with this myopic process and procedure for the sake of a myopic process and procedure without any consideration for the primary focus of protecting the, the property and the health and the lives. They lose total, lost total focus of what the, what it's supposed to be. It's just a continuous process of stubborn ignorance. And there needs to be some kind of a method to address this. Looks like I'm out of time. I thank you for your consideration and I hope you will do something about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Pardon me?
I said, thank you. Please come forward, give your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Virginia Haugen, 2503 R Street Southeast, Auburn. Twice now, I've noticed people working on our street and they close off my northbound access to my property and my neighbors. We don't get all uptight about losing a little access for a couple of days. That's not a big deal. But that the city has not bothered to notify us ahead of time bothers us. I understand if you people don't like to go to a lot of meetings, but you know what? If you had committee meetings, maybe you would know this is coming up and maybe you could tell somebody to maybe notify the, the neighbors that the street's going to be closed off. Big problem was this morning, when I tried to get to my house, I got some, I was going to say clown, I should not do that. He was dressed up in a little suit like a, a flagman or something, no flag. I sat at 29th and R Street Southeast for over a minute. The guy never looked at me. He wasn't directing traffic. He was looking at his cell phone. Finally, he noticed that somebody wanted to use our street. He said, oh, no, 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 you're not coming down this way. You're going to go clear up to Riverwalk and go all the way around and down squiggly little old Edumclaw Highway to get to your house. So that's what I, I said, somebody crazy? No, I will go this way. So I go down to Game Farm, make a U-turn, go M Street and back down to 25th and I come home. This guy, in the meantime, of course, he's still on his cell phone. Now, the other thing, a few weeks ago, there was a man here and I made light of it. He was complaining about the campaign signs. Well, I got a whole truckload of campaign signs, broken sticks. One of them is from Tony Ventrella. That guy didn't run for anything in a long time. The funny one, this lady's not even running for mayor. The funny one is hanging upside down in one screw and I can make a whole little word out of her name, upside down. If anybody would like to have a broken up campaign sign, please let me know. My phone number is 253-833-6205. And, oh, and the, the railroad, maybe we could get them to pick up the mattresses and the couches and, and all that stuff that's laying around in the shrubs. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to respond to a couple of things. First and foremost, if you're picking up campaign signs from an active campaign, that is against the law.
No, no, no. These are the ones in the weed and the muds.
Oh, I'm, I'm just giving you, just giving you information that if there are any active ones, that is against the law. And Ingrid, were you able to contact Ms. Haugen before this evening to provide information on that closure today?
Staff, I had left three messages for you.
Virginia, staff left three messages for you today about the closure. Glad you wanted to stick around to find out the information. That was not a flagger actively controlling the intersection because northbound R Street was closed and the intersection is signalized. So the gentleman that was out there is not a flagger. He was only there to ensure that no one drives through the closure and endangers the workers. And there was information provided that there would be intermittent closure on R Street northbound to complete the work and there was no end date given. But the staff is going to be talking with the contractors as well to ensure that they are on top of the closure and the work that's being done. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? Mr. City Attorney, do we, do we allow for people to come back for a second, second round?
The city council rules don't provide one way or the other. It could happen, but it might have to be on a special basis that it's not, everybody gets to do it type of thing.
Okay. Councilmember Olman.
Yes, I'd move that we allow Mr. Oliphant another, since it's in-depth and we'll be debating this tonight.
So I think it's a separate, yeah, separate issue.
I'd move that we suspend normal procedures if we have a second and.
Councilmember Troutman.
I second that.
Can you turn your microphone on, please?
I second that.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? And all those in favor of suspending the rules to allow more than one session under public comment by an individual this evening, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes. Mr. Oliphant? But we didn't suspend the three-minute rule.
I'm unclear as, don't start the timer. I'm unclear as to whether that is on the same topic or is on the other topic I wanted to talk.
New topic.
New topic. Thank you. Resolution 5314, the business improvement area. Just by its title, city encourages economic development. That's what's behind the business improvement area. And it's for the downtown, principally the downtown area, that is, the business improvement area. The city already has some non, has some other economic incentives downtown. The biggest one that I see is related to parking. Developers do not have to put in what is the traditional amount of parking in the downtown area as opposed to other parts of the city and is what's customary within the region. It's about half of what's normally required, two spaces per thousand square feet versus normally about four per thousand square feet. That's to help stimulate the businesses downtown and it relates to parking. The question is with the BIA, how to fund, to me, it provides a mechanism to help fund parking as a stimulus for the downtown area. One of the council members gave me a book to read that belongs to the city that talked about the value of parking in. about the value of parking in the down, in, within the city, and I've also read other economic studies concerned in other states, Maine, Minnesota, recently regarding the value of parking in the downtown area to support the businesses within the downtown. As I said, and under the zoning code, we don't, we don't have to provide the, the normal amount of parking. So, with the BIA and the funding that's gonna be coming through that, that provides a mechanism to support the businesses in the downtown area, and one of the ways it can support those businesses is to provide for parking for those businesses. And that ties in, of course, to what we were talking about earlier, a means to fund a larger parking garage, a community garage, that would serve a dual purpose, sounder and less. And then there's all sorts of ways to fund that through, um, LID-type payments, you know, with an assessment on new businesses coming in, uh, on new construction coming in, on existing businesses, to be able to use it for their employees and staff. And in the cities I've seen that in, you can go allow parking for two or three hours at no charge, which allows the customers and the people coming to visit a reason to come, and makes it convenient and the psychological free parking for those that are coming to visit and do their business. Thank you, I made it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Final time. All right, we will move on. I don't believe we have any correspondents this evening, Danny? All right, we will move to council ad hoc committee reports. Council ad hoc committee chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on an assigned task and may give their recommendation to the city council, if any. And we currently have one ad hoc committee, that is the finance committee, that is chaired by Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you, Your Honor. This week, as members of the council ad hoc finance committee, Councilmember Wagner and I reviewed the payroll vouchers and electronic deposits for approximately $2.1 million and claims vouchers and wire transfers for approximately $7.5 million for the periods September 28th to October 11th and October 16th, 2017, respectively. And the committee recommends council approval of these expenses.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right, we will move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Do I have a motion? Deputy Mayor Wells?
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Baggett?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Wells?
Thank you. The consent agenda consists of the minutes of the October 2nd, 2017 regular meeting, the minutes of June 13, 2016, and March 13, 2017 study sessions. It also speaks to the claims and payroll vouchers that Councilmember Baggett and Wagner reviewed and recommended approval. And finally, it speaks to Public Works Project CP 1502, which is the contract to install a traffic signal at A Street Southeast and 37th Street Southeast.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes. All right, we have no, oh, we do have unfinished business. That is resolution number 5314. Mr. City Attorney, if I understand, since it is unfinished business, there is already a motion on the floor, am I recalling correctly?
I, I would anticipate that.
All right. So...
It has not been a motion.
There has not been a motion? Okay, thank you. All right, so we have resolution number 5314, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Resolution number 5314, a resolution of the city council of the city of Auburn, Washington, stating its intent to update and modify the provisions governing the Auburn Business Improvement Area, including the exemptions to the special assessments and setting a public hearing therefore.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Deputy Mayor Wells?
I move for the approval of resolution 5314.
Thank you. Second, Councilmember Holman?
Second.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Wells?
Um, this would allow for us to he, have a public hearing on this resolution.
Thank you. Councilmember Wagner?
I'd like to request that when this comes back to the council, that the referenced other resolutions and ordinances be included in our agenda packet. There are several that are referenced in the resolution.
Are you, are you talking about those that have previously been approved?
Uh, no, the ones that still have some effect. Some of the exemptions are buried in there, and I think there's another one that has some merit, or some bearing on, on this decision.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? None? All those in favor of resolution number 5314, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes. Right, we have, do we have any new business? Councilmember Holman?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee meeting last week, and they brought forth a legislative agenda for 2018. And it really needs to be discussed in our study session amongst all of the council so that we can give our support or any comments that we might have prior to next month's PIC meeting.
Okay, thank you. And I, I did send out an email just a couple of hours ago, asking for a study session next week, a topic to include the city of Auburn's legislative agenda, asking for your thoughts on that, as well as, we will be sharing the Sound Cities Association agenda, legislative agenda, and also the Association of Washington Cities agenda. So if you could please ensure that you send all of your thoughts and ideas to me, so we can make sure that those get included in the packet. Okay? Great. All right, we will move on to ordinances. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Ordinance number 6660, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Auburn, Washington, approving an area-wide rezone for properties zoned environmental park to light industrial.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Holman?
Yes, I move for the adoption of ordinance number 6660.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember DeCoursey?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman?
Yes, this refers to a rezoning of an area that we refer to as the environmental park zone, not to be confused with the environmental park itself, they're two separate areas. This is privately owned land that abuts the environmental park, and the motion deals, or the ordinance deals with the rezoning to light industrial to make it compliant with our comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments? Councilmember Wagner?
I'm somewhat disappointed that we're moving away from the green zone concept that Councilmember Norman brought forward in a retreat of the council and gained full support of the council at that time, for a green zone to encourage, uh, high-paying jobs to locate near the environmental park. That was passed at about the time that the resolution, or the recession hit, so we're only about five years out of that. We were supposed to, as part of the plan, the original designation, develop incentives for high-paying, environmentally sensitive or environmentally interested companies to locate there. Those incentives were never developed, and they were fundamental to making this thing work. So when people say it hasn't worked, I say there are two major reasons why it hasn't worked. So I'm not going to vote for this because it, it wipes out the EP's green zone. I was more interested in the one that was proposed, or was one of the options given to us, that would have converted the area south of Main Street, which is about three fourths of the area we're in question. I was in favor of making that back to M1, because I think that just realistically, it isn't very much of a area that is enhanced by the environmental park, and therefore why would these high-paying jobs come there? But, the portion that is right beside the park, and is north of Main Street, I really was hoping we could send back to the, to the planning commission for consideration of retaining those aspects of incentives and other, other matters that would bring economic development to that area. So I intend to vote against it because I think that the most, or the way it's put together, where the intention of this resolution is to, your ordinance is to rezon the entire area, and I think that's not appropriate and gives up an opportunity to attract high-paying jobs because of this unique environmental park that we have. So we're throwing away an opportunity by not at least considering the north of Main Street portion as still satisfying those economic development and environmental, uh, preservation goals.
Thank you. So Councilmember Wagner, at the study session, the discussions kind of encompassed the fact that this was to reconcile our comprehensive plan, which had been approved for change last year, to the zoning, so that they were reconciled. And the recommendation then was to move forward with revisiting a comprehensive plan update for the upcoming year that would allow you the time to create those incentives. So your desires have changed since then, is that correct?
No, and I did see that notice of incentives, but it didn't really speak to the area south of Main Street and the area north of Main Street, and why they are very different in terms of being able to satisfy the intention of the council at that time. Part of the south end does very little, part right beside the park, I believe, would do quite a bit. But I wanna say again, and I've told you this a bunch of times, and that there is a high-tech company over on the West Valley Highway that located in Auburn simply because we have that unique park there. They're probably not a real big company, maybe $5 million a year, but they're high-paying jobs. There's over 100,000 jobs that these guys brought here because of the environmental park. And so I think we are missing a chance here to further leverage that unique aspect by not considering right now, instead of later, the, the continuation of an environmental park incentive zone in the north of Main Street. So I haven't prepared any kind of an amendment to propose, but I think I will try to craft one here as we move forward, but I'll let other discussion go on here before.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Wells?
Thank you. We set about the goal 11 years ago of coming up with incentives that didn't happen, and what I'd like to see us do in a study session is sit down and look at the issue of incentives and bring in or let the way be led by our planning commission, whichever we decide. But I feel that we have a greater need on Main Street. As I work with, and many of you meet with the public, there seems to be a great deal of interest in some significant revitalization beyond what we have already done. And so I'd like to have the planning commissions and ourselves look at the issue of incentives and look at other areas where we might have a bigger payoff and a faster payoff.
Councilmember Wagner?
Downtown already has...
Your microphone isn't on, Councilmember.
Downtown already has benefited from, my guess is about $10 million of taxpayer money invested. It's gone through all kinds of things like the, the Main Street sidewalks, the new lighting, the forgiving of, or the, I guess forgiving is a good word, of, of impact fees for, for transportation improvements, on and on. Investment in properties that we sold for less than we paid for them. So my guess, if we rattled all those down and put them on a list, and if we're gonna do this in a study session, I think we ought to have that list.
Yeah.
Because, you know, everybody would like to invest in downtown, but we'd also like to invest in better streets, in more human services, in homeless, and there's a lot of things to spend money on. And I'm saying, downtown has already gotten its share lately, and I'd like to see that share before we consider incentives for downtown.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on that? Okay, Deputy Mayor Wells?
I think that sounds very, very wise, Councilmember Wagner. I think that we need to look at the issue of incentives, look at where we've previously put incentives, what the payoff has been, and, and it's not always gonna be a one-for-one, but I think that we need to look at the bigger issue. And in a study session format, after we get some of this data that we can look at, would be beneficial. Maybe I'll see if we can get on a study session what kind of data we would like collected for us so that we can begin to look at that issue. And the planning commission might have some interesting ideas on what they think the data is that we need to look at and take into consideration, too. So I think this is not gonna be something that happens rapidly, but I think this would be the time to do a real analysis so that we get what we hope for, but more importantly, that we actually get the incentives made, because that's what happened last time with the environmental area, that the incentives, we didn't get them in place.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to applaud the vision of prior councils and Lynn Norman for trying this. We, we should try things, and we could sit here and debate why it worked or didn't work, but my main concern right now is that in the 10 years that it's been in exist, 11 years it's been in existence, nothing has come of it yet. But we can debate the reasons for that. But my greatest concern is that we have a comp plan and a zoning ordinance that are out of skew with one another. We really need to make the two be the same, otherwise we're dangling meat out there for litigation. So let's make them the same tonight, get that loose end taken care of, and then aspire to be as creative as you were when Lynn Norman was on the council. And try different things that bend the curve a little bit to make it a more livable city. That's my two cents.
Councilmember DeCoursey, and then Councilmember Pelosi?
Thank you, Mayor. I have to agree with Councilmember Holman in looking at, moving forward with this. I think it's time that we, we make a decision, keep ourselves moving forward, and I don't think there's anything preventing us tonight from reaching out, looking for incentives across the board as we go forward in the future. And I think incentive-wise, we have a particular area we're focusing on, but as a council, we need to focus on incentives citywide.
Yeah.
And at some point in time, we need to address that issue and take a look at that, because we are a growing community with businesses that hopefully will come here to grow with us, and we have to look at those creative ways, as Councilmember Holman just described, to entice those businesses to come here and stay here. So I'm in favor of moving forward and then continuously working on the other processes as we go through as rapidly as we can.
Thank you. Councilmember Pelosi?
Thank you, Mayor. I gotta stand up for this. If my pockets weren't full, I would pull them out and say, "Hey, a business decision we must make. We've already gone through the 10, 11 years, and we..." We've already gone through the 10, 11 years, and we learned, and again, Councilmember Holman, I agree with you, and we have to now move out, let things fall as they might fall, and then we can come back if needed later on. I mean, we can change anything. Thank you.
Anyone else that hasn't spoken yet, councilmembers? All right, Councilmember Wagner.
Well, I'm a big fan of incentives, and they have worked downtown. And if we put $10 million in, I think we've probably gotten that back, one-for-one in new construction and property tax and all those things. So I believe in incentives. I've even for about five years been proposing a similar kind of incentive zone for the airport. It hasn't gone anywhere other than just to kind of make its way in a, to sway into the latest airport plan. But I still believe that's an area where we need to spend incentive effort. And I will say over and over, we didn't give it a chance in the green zone. And I think that I'm going to be proposing an amendment here that will hopefully let us take advantage of that unique environmental park. And maybe this is the time, can I make the proposed amendment now?
Mr. City Attorney, there's no problem with that, is there?
An amendment could be made at this time.
So I move that we add to this resolution, what is it, resolution?
Ordinance 660.
The wording, the council directs the mayor to prioritize evaluation of the area of the environmental park zone that is north of Main Street with heavy emphasis on innovative incentives.
Mr. City Attorney, do you want to read that back?
I'll do the best I can. Council directs the mayor to prioritize evaluation of the area of the environmental park zone as, is it north, just the part north of Main Street? North of Main Street with heavy emphasis on incentives.
Okay, is there a second? Councilmember Pelosi.
I'll second it, Mayor.
Okay, is there any discussion on, Councilmember Decourcy?
I don't think there's anything wrong with adding a provision that allows us to do more research in the process overall. And I think by giving the mayor an opportunity to direct staff to do things can also be more beneficial to report back to the council as we go forward and look at future incentive programs. So I guess I'd be in favor of doing that.
So Councilmember Wagner, just want to make sure on your amendment to the motion, it would still be for the, for the ordinance to be passed this evening? Okay, all right. Councilmember Wagner.
I intentionally did not put any timeline on this. I'd say instruct the mayor to do it next year or anything else. Because I think trying to limit development in the north part, if we pass it, and I think we will pass this tonight, is probably unrealistic. I know when we first established the environmental park zone, there were several residential properties in that area that were not in favor of any kind of rezone. They wanted to keep it residential, which it was at that time in one portion of it. So I'm not putting a timeline on it, even though I realize that somebody may come in and buy up all those houses and stack another tilt-up concrete building there that looks terrible and uses up our valuable space with almost no income to the city because it's just distribution. So I'm actually going to vote for the resolution because if we pass the, if we pass the amendment, I'm going to vote for the resolution.
Okay, is there any other comments? Councilmember Troutman.
I agree with all of my council...
Your microphone, please.
I agree with all my council members. I'm all for incentives as well. I thought that that's what we had talked about at the study session, and I agree that it needs to be brought back. And we're giving you the authority to do that and bring it back to the council. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Holman.
Point of clarification. So we, the amendment, speaking only to the amendment, is not to chain, is to, your amendment supports the rezone changing to light industrial on both sides. But it adds for us to examine, the mayor to examine and bring to us, an examination of possible incentives for the north portion of what had prior been the environmental zone. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Wells.
I support that idea, Councilmember Wagner, because it's going to, what we investigate and come up with for incentives for that area can serve as a map or a path towards looking at other types of incentives. And I think that we need to spend some time bringing ourselves up to speed on what are practical incentives and what we've done in the past and what's paid off. So I think that's a great amendment that I can support.
All right, seeing no other...
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question? Would it be consistent with the intentions of the maker and the second or in the other parties on the council if we were to add one word to the motion, and I'll read it, telling you what that word is? Council directs the mayor to prioritize evaluation of the area of the, I would suggest, former environmental park zone north of Main Street with heavy emphasis on incentives. The reason for the former is because this would, the rest of the ordinance would take that away, and this way we're at least consistent with that change.
Councilmember Wagner.
That's okay with me.
Great, okay. Thank you, Councilmember Pelosi. All right, seeing no other comments, all those in favor of the amendment to ordinance number 6660, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The amendment passes. Now to the original ordinance, number 6660. Are there any questions or comments on that? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number 6660, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes.
Next matter, Your Honor, is Resolution Number 5321, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with King County Metro for construction, constructing reinforced sidewalk sections for bus stop shelters along Auburn Way South as part of the Auburn Way South corridor, safety improvements, Muckleshoot Plaza to Dogwood Street Southeast.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Deputy Mayor Wells.
I move for the approval of Resolution 5321.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Troutman.
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Wells.
I think that we've been studying this area to a great extent and working with our tribe, and it is going to be nice to enter into this local agreement so that we can finish off the sidewalk reinforcement there and the bus stop shelter.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of Resolution Number 5321, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes.
Resolution Number 5322, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, recommending to the Sound Transit Board of Directors its preferred parking garage site in downtown Auburn for the Auburn Station access improvement project and encouraging Sound Transit's serious consideration of unsolicited proposals for the construction of said site.
Thank you. Now, Mr. City Attorney, I want to make sure we understand what the expectation is here for a motion. Is it a motion to recommend a specific site?
The, there would be a requirement that there be a site identified in the resolution. There's a blank in that text, and I'm assuming that we will have council identify which is their top or preferred site.
All right. Is there a motion? Deputy Mayor Wells.
I move for the approval of Resolution 5322 with the insert of Site 1.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Decourcy.
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Wells.
I seconded this because I think we need to discuss...
You made the motion.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I thought that we needed to get this on the table so that we could discuss all the different renditions that we have here and make sure that when we vote on this, we know exactly what we're voting for. So I did it so that we could open discussion.
Councilmember Decourcy.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I have to go back to my career and my almost 40 years of working in construction management, executive management, and things that were drummed over my head over that period of time from not only developers, but from superiors. And for me, this is all about cost. I'm not in favor of spending extra dollars for the same particular space, whether it's a parking space, a building, or whatever it may be. I'm always conscious and always looking at the impact of costs on construction projects, the overruns on projects, the change orders on projects, and anything else that might be brought before the project is complete. Now, we have a unique situation here between the four sites because we're all, all the sites are in the downtown area, and we've talked about traffic issues. And this allows us to go one step further, I think, if we look at another potential addition to this that may be made. But no matter where we build this parking garage downtown, as I've said in the study session, there is going to be a traffic impact. Five o'clock should be gridlock. We already have, you know, narrow streets in our city. We can't widen them unless we take buildings down and move buildings out of the way and widen streets. We really can't do anything to change our overall infrastructure system, and we cannot change our freeway system or any other passageway that leads to it. We just have to come to grips that if we build the second parking garage, perhaps we're going to see a lot more activity downtown, which will be good also. But we just have to figure out from here on in where we go traffic-wise with this and how we handle that issue, because it's going to be a big issue. But again, as I've said, I'm in favor of cost, and that's why I'm in favor of Site 1.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has comments? Councilmember Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor. I want, I have handed out a whereas for consideration by the council, and so therefore I'd like to make an amendment, a whereas amendment.
Mr. City Attorney, is this, is this an amendment? This was handed out as...
It actually was not introduced previously. It would be an amendment.
All right, thank you.
And I'll read it real quickly. Whereas, the City Council includes the following condition on this recommendation. One, a comprehensive traffic study must be completed. Two, proposed congestion and safety mitigation measures must be identified. And three, the costs of those mitigation measures must be professionally estimated to a plus-minus 20% level of accuracy for both Site 1, which is the former Mel's Hardware location, and Site 2, the current Agro Shop Ace Hardware location, the results of which will become a key consideration in the site selection and...
Councilmember Wagner.
You second the motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Pelosi, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, yes, I will. There has not been a traffic mitigation study for these two potential sites. Talked, I spoke to Councilmember Wagner, and we collaborated on adding this whereas condition. Legal has reviewed and made language revisions. I urge council's support of this whereas amendment. This will assist in future potential infrastructure mitigation and costs, and importantly, provide the council a key consideration in the site collection, selection.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Wells.
A couple of points. I want to speak first to what Councilmember Decourcy said, the need to be very fiscally sound. But one of my additional concerns is that of a vision for the future. And we're already behind in this second garage, and it's likely that if we were to open it tomorrow, it could be full. So I am looking down the line at cost and vision for some potential spaces. And as we look at Site 1, we have what they're proposing, which was 500-something, and that would be in addition to what we have down below, which is a real sales point. But I'm still looking at a partnership to see if we can get more. Now to the second item, and you contractor-type engineer people, when I look at estimates plus or minus 20% accuracy, boy, that's not very accurate. And if we're looking at things that are $5 or $6 million and we're 20% one way or the other, that to me does, shouldn't it be closer to maybe 5%? That's a question for you, you construction kind of guys.
Councilmember Decourcy.
I think perhaps what the intention is here, correct me if I'm wrong, Rich, but I think those speaks to is, in a initial study, you're looking in order of magnitude.
Okay.
You really can't get so well-defined until you know what you're defining, and to the point where you can narrow it down and then reasonably bring it down to a percentage that we can live with. But in the initial sense of this, it's kind of the broad brush stroke of what it may look like, and then as it's brought back to us, we can even get it more refined to that and bring it well within reason. And I think Ingrid probably tells us what the well within reason would be today, because I've been out of it for a couple of years. But I think for me, it's just an order of magnitude.
Councilmember Baggett.
Well, having also been involved in construction and construction management for many, many years with the Boeing Company and McDonnell Douglas before that, I agree with Councilmember Decourcy with this plus or minus 20%. At this stage of the game, it is a rough order of magnitude or something in that realm. And I do believe whatever site is selected, you're going to, you're going to want to do a mitigation study anyway of the traffic because it hasn't been done in this area for some time. And notwithstanding, you're not really going to find a lot of things that you can accomplish change, if you will, like Councilmember Decourcy stated, because our streets are what they are and the buildings around them, and unless you tear buildings down and reconfigure the entire area downtown in any of these configurations, you're going to be stuck pretty much with what you've got. So it's all out there for a study, and I think the 20% would be in order.
Councilmember Holman.
I would like to speak to the amendment for the traffic study. I like the price and the ability to expand that Site 1 offers, but it's also one block away from the emergency entrance of MultiCare Hospital. Now, I have no construction background whatsoever, but I did drive one of those vehicles with the shiny blue lights that spun around, and that is our emergency entrance, and we'll be dumping 550 cars into and out of, twice a day, Site 1, and I don't know what the traffic impact. Now then, the engineer types could figure that out and figure a way around it. I think that's reasonable. But I still need to see what the impact of the traffic is going to be, because I would hate to build a gridlock into a 24-hour access to a hospital. Perhaps it won't emerge. Perhaps there's a way around it. But that's why I like the language. Now then, if we do, we'd have to modify the language of the motion that was originally made by the deputy mayor, because she said solely Site 1. This amendment would require us to say Site 1 or Site 2. One or Site Two in order for the language to agree. So I, I'll just leave that up to the makers of the motion and the amendment.
Councilmember Wagner and then Councilmember Decorse.
Well, putting into this, the main motions, Site One and Site Two, would sure be fine with me, because I think that if we, if we analyze Site One, and it is just a hopeless traffic situation, we don't want Sound Transit to use that excuse to further delay the garage. So I, and I think just from having done a lot of traffic stuff and engineering stuff in my life, that Site Two is going to be easier. You could even get changed off ramps from eighteen. I mean, there's a lot you could do over there by buying up a few of the older houses in that neighborhood, which are probably going to disappear eventually anyway, the apartments like they're going in. So I think Site Two has a lot of possibilities, maybe even for the alternative that, that Mr. Oliphant has proposed, although it doesn't include properties he owns like Site One, but...
Development rights, not property owned.
Yeah.
The city owns the property.
So anyway, I, I think we need to see both of them, even if we only have Site One in the, in the recommendation, because if we come back and the, the study and that's a loser, we, we need to have the data about the most likely low congestion space, and that is, in my view, Site Two.
Thank you. Councilmember Decorse.
All right. That explanation satisfies my next question, so.
All right. Deputy Mayor Wells.
I'm, I'm hesitant, as the maker of the motion, to add Site Two, because I'm not the most trusting partner with Sound Transit. This garage was promised under Sound Transit Two, and now we're finally getting it. Now, you have to remember, I am concerned about costs, but I'm concerned about the vision. I don't know if Sound Transit is concerned about our vision. This might be just one of the four, you know, they're doing one in Puyallup, Sumner, Canton, ours, that they just want to get and get off their plate. And if we give them an easy out, I, I just don't trust them to the degree that you do. Though I do see that we need to gather data for a backup. But I don't want to provide Sound Transit with the backup.
Councilmember Baggett and then Councilmember Decorse.
I have more of a question. Isn't the duty of the council tonight to make a recommendation? And that recommendation should not include more than one site, I wouldn't think.
Mr. City Attorney, do you want to weigh in on that?
The, the council was asked for a recommendation. I, I would not know that you couldn't give more than one site, but you don't need to give more than one site.
Councilmember Decorse and then Councilmember Wagner.
I guess my question would be in relation to the, the additional whereas. And then speaking to the deputy mayor's comment regarding vision for the future, I know there's a cost involved with this when we do this, but we're looking at a comprehensive traffic study. If we're doing that, and we know that the impact of a parking garage anywhere is going to be impactful.
Yeah.
On entire downtown area, why would we limit it to two selected sites for Sound Transit? Why don't we broaden it and do a traffic congestion study, comprehensive study, for the downtown core? Now, I know that's going to take longer, it's going to provide, you know, additional necessary resources to do that. But if we're looking at how we would do some mitigation efforts related to that, and Councilmember Holman's comment regarding the emergency entrance over the hospitals is well, well-taken, because we need to look at all of this congestion in the downtown core. And I think if we, in this additional whereas, limit it to two sites, I think we're going to short sight ourselves.
Councilmember Decorse, are you, are in your comments, are you saying that you think the city should do a downtown study, traffic study?
I, I would like to have that discussion, because I think if we, if we as a city don't do something, and I understand Sound Transit needs to definitely do something, but if we, the city, don't participate, do something, I think we're going to short sight ourselves as we go forward in the decision-making process and not uncover everything we need to uncover for traffic mitigation.
Councilmember Wagner.
The inclusion of Site Two could be as a second priority recommendation. I could put both of them into the original motion and say, you know, one is the first priority, one is the second priority. And we would expect less analysis of the second priority, except as it applies to the whereas.
Deputy Mayor Wells.
Back to my dream, a vision for the future. I like Claude's idea where we look at a bigger sphere of influence, because I, I like the idea of a bigger and not tying it to a second site, because we're going to have, and if we participate in it, I think that we, being the ones that live here and work here and do the construction here, will pick up on things that maybe Sound Transit, you know, wouldn't see. So I'm liking your idea, Claude, of a more general but broad with our involvement, because we have ownership and have to live with whatevers we end up with.
Councilmember Trout Manuel. Your microphone, please.
As John mentioned, the hospital, and we already have congestion as it is, when it comes to between three to five and six, that congestion is there. And if we built that site on Site One without a survey done, then, you know, it's just going to cause more congestion and everything. So I agree with Councilmember Decorse. This is maybe a study that the city should have done, knowing that one day we were going to have these, this garage built. We should have been looking into that as well. So I agree that we should be involved and do this study.
Okay. Yeah, that would require a budget amendment. Councilmember Wagner.
If we ask Sound Transit to do this comprehensive study, I can guarantee you, we're going to wait another year for our garage, maybe longer. It's comprehensive citywide, you know, comprehensive I put in there was to tell them that we didn't want to just look at the exit of the thing, for instance. But perhaps to get some more input to this from the local people, we could add to the whereas amendment the words, a comprehensive traffic study done in cooperation with city technical staff. And that kind of leaves open whether we pay any or not. We could negotiate that. But it would, it would say, we expect our guys to be at all your meetings as you're doing this and writing the scope of work for the traffic engineer that's probably going to charge fifty to a hundred thousand bucks to do this. So I'm, I think it would be good to have that in, no matter where we end up with this debate. And so I would propose to amend the amendment to add under the number one item, a comprehensive traffic study in cooperation with Auburn's technical transportation staff.
And, all right, is there a second to that? Councilmember Holman?
Second.
Okay. And I believe, Kevin, you wanted to provide some input on this.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor and members of city council, I just want to make sure that some things are clear in the record, and if they are, my apologies in advance. But there's been references made to this comprehensive traffic study, and I want to assure you, both Sound Transit's process, the next steps that they would go through require that, number one. Number two, we, we, the city, would be significantly involved in both studying the scope of that and working directly with them as they, as they both prepare the information, and helping them and assisting them and critiquing them, and then also going through the review process. So there will be a significant level of traffic analysis that will have to be legally done, both by their requirements and ours. So I just want to assure the council, if there's concerns about that. Now, there may be boundaries to that study, if you will, that, of, of issues that go beyond what we can legally ask of Sound Transit to look at. And that may be areas where staff can work with the city council to identify that and then determine what kind of scope and cost might be for that. But there will be a very comprehensive study. We've already had very preliminary conversations with Sound Transit staff. Everyone expects that. They know that any of the sites that are being considered will have significant impacts both on the circulation and congestion in downtown. So we're, you know, at least in our heads at this point, we're all gearing up for that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Decorse.
I guess I have a question on that, then. So if we say within our approval here that we're, we're looking at Site One, but we want a study for Site One and Site Two, is Sound Transit going to do a study for Site One and Site Two if we select Site One?
I think the answer is no, Councilmember. They will, they will, if, if we have an interest beyond the preferred site, because remember, the Sound Transit Board is going to select a site to move forward with, they will probably only select one. That has been their pattern to this point. If we have interest in doing additional analysis on another site, I think reasonably we would be expected to pay for that and do that work.
Councilmember Wagner.
I don't know that I agree that that would be on our nickel, because Sound Transit has at least as much interest in having this garage built so they can increase ridership as the city does in providing service. So I'm thinking it's probably a cooperative thing, and that's why I think these words are useful, even though they are showing goodwill now and talking to you. Are they going to continue to invite you to every meeting, even though you have to travel to Seattle and all that? I think we need the cooperative thing spelled out and expected. But I also think that, that we can negotiate, once we pass this amendment, we can negotiate with Sound Transit about how much, if any, we pay for the second one. Because if they bring us a traffic study for the first one, using just their process as it's laid out, and it's, you know, way too much, you know, thirty million dollars' worth of, of traffic mitigation, then they can say, no, we can't afford that, we're out of budget. And then they'll say, okay, now we're starting the whole process again. That's a couple of years' worth of work. If they do try to set Site Two right now, maybe we help with them a little bit. Then we're ready to go if Site One has a huge cost of mitigation. It's all about timing here for me, although cost is important, too. But I think timing is, is critical, and anything that we can do to shorten time is good.
Deputy Mayor Wells.
Timing is important, and the cost is important. But if timing was so important, it would have happened a lot sooner. We need to build for the future, and this is our one opportunity to build something that may be beyond our capacity needs for today that could work in the future. And I don't trust Sound Transit. I, I don't. And I, I would just as soon go with the one site and not give them the wiggle room or the discretion or whatever to be able to move it beyond what it looks like we can afford within the existing timeline with a greater capacity. And I think that when you look at the location and with what is happening at the hospital, this would be the time to get in concert with the hospital, too, as they move. And right now, because they've got the emergency, the road where the emergency is all kind of blocked off and everything else, that's not always going to look like, that it could actually be worse, but it's not always going to look like that. But this would force them to do some creative thinking, too, as they use the property to the west. But I'm going to come right back and say, I don't, I don't trust Sound Transit. And I'd like to just give them the one option.
Councilmember Decorse.
Okay, let me complicate this more.
Okay, we already have an amendment to the amendment.
Right. Now, can I make another amendment to the second amendment?
No, you cannot.
You cannot, okay. Well, I have a suggestion. My suggestion is that, to the maker of the, of the amendment, that we, we strike the Site Two, but include the provision that upon completion and analysis of the traffic study for Site One, the city council reserves the right to request additional traffic studies, period.
Mr. City Attorney, let me ask if, if there is a process for that. So if we, if the council votes on the amendment and it were to fail, is there an opportunity to make another amendment to?
Technically, two amendments is all you get.
Okay.
What I would suggest if, I don't want to make this more complicated, but I think the way to do what you might want to do is to retract Amendment Two and then come back with another amendment, second amendment, that includes a more comprehensive collection of what you want to include.
And does there need to be a, the retraction, does it need to have a second, or is it simply retracted by the maker?
The maker and a second, make, typically, the maker and the second can with, with retract Amendment Two.
Okay, and then you don't have to vote on that. You simply are making and seconding the retraction. All right.
Can you remember who did those?
Councilmember Wagner.
I retract Amendment Two.
Council, Councilmember Pelosi.
It's not a motion to retract.
No, it's not a motion. It's just a retraction.
The maker and the second are retracted.
I agree.
All right. Oh, was it Holman on that one? Oh, my apologies. Councilmember Holman.
Agree.
All right.
Sorry about that.
So we have retracted the amendment.
Number Two.
Number Two. We still have in front of us the original amendment that was brought forward and made by Councilmember Pelosi. Correct?
That's correct.
All right. Councilmember Decorse.
I will propose Amendment Number Two.
Number Two.
To state, whereas, the city council includes the following condition on this recommendation. One, a traffic, comprehensive traffic study in cooperation with Auburn Technical Transportation Staff must be completed. Two, proposed congestion and safety mitigation measures must be identified. And three, the costs of those mitigation measures must be professionally estimated to a plus-or-minus twenty percent level of accuracy for Site One, former Mel's Hardware location. And, and upon completion and analysis of the traffic study for Site One, the city council reserves the right to request additional traffic studies, comma, the results which will become key consideration for site selection.
All right. Do we have a second? Councilmember Wagner.
Well, before I second that, I, I retracted the thing about cooperative that you read into.
You just put it back in.
We put it back in, because otherwise we...
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. You have not been, you haven't been called on yet, so the floor is not yours.
You got it, yeah.
The floor is not yours, Deputy Mayor. Thank you very much. All right. You seconded the motion. All right. Now, is there any discussion? All right. We will vote on the amendment. Mr., does anyone need the city attorney to read that back to you? Okay, Mr. City Attorney.
I'm going to do the best I can. This is, the text of Amendment Number Two was to add, after the parenge one in the amendment one, after, you know, comprehensive traffic study must be completed in cooperation with the city technical transportation staff. And then, and also added to that same language was text that the city reserve, um, let's see, the city reserves the right to have additional tests done depending upon, and I'm, yes, please help me out here.
Okay. As the city attorney indicated, the language added paraphrase, one, a comprehensive traffic study must be completed in cooperation with Auburn Technical Staff. It will then read after that, number two, proposed congestion and safety mitigation measures must be identified. And three, the costs of those mitigation measures must be professionally estimated to a plus-or-minus twenty percent level of accuracy for Site One. And upon completion of the, an analysis of the traffic study, the council reserves the right to request additional studies, the results of which, which will become a key consideration in the site selection.
in the site selection. Did I get that correctly?
Great. All right. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of Amendment Number Two, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Amendment Number Two passes. Amendment Number One was?
The Amendment Number One was what we just amended, so now it is before the body for a vote.
All right. So, the amendment is now in front of the council for a vote. Are there any questions or comments on the amendment? Hearing none. All those in favor of Amendment Number One, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes. Now, we still have in front of us the original motion.
As amended.
Which, as amended, which would have Site One as the preferred option for the City Council to move forward to Sound Transit with the language that was just amended for the traffic studies. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, are there any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of Resolution Number 5322, as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes. Thank you for keeping us in line with all of the verbiage, and we will move to mayor and councilmember reports. At this time, the mayor and city council may report on their significant city-related activities. Since the last regular council meeting, we will begin with Deputy Mayor Wells.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have no report.
Councilmember Pelosi.
I'm ready, though. I had a very interesting meeting today, and I'll share it with everyone. I'm on the Regional Policy Committee, King County, and we've been discussing a lot about the Veterans Senior and Human Services Levy. And as you all probably remember, the current levy is on its second term, six-year term, so it's finishing up 12 years. And I won't go into the variances, because I've already discussed that once, but within, within the, the new proposed levy, which is, will be on our ballots November 7th, there will be coverage for advocacy throughout the Eric King County for veterans. In other words, having a meeting area like the Senior Center, like we had up to about a year ago, but the veterans of foreign wars were coming once a week, all day long, taking care of claims, informing veterans on their benefits. Well, today, I've been working with the King County Veterans Affairs, and so they sent out two members, two veterans today. They don't work for King County, they work for the, directly for the Veterans Administration, the federal government. I didn't ask that, but that's what they did. So in our meeting today, we talked about advocacy, the government, the federal government providing coverage for November and December, one day a month, one day a month, and that, they are going to be sending us a yea or nay, this, this week or next week. But what this is going to mean is, in the current levy that's going to be voted on on November 7th, has funding to provide King County advocacy out in the communities. So we have a potential of ramping up King County services for veterans at our Senior Center, in addition to the government coverage. So we could get multiple coverage for our South King County veterans. That, to me, is a wonderful thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I don't have a report, thank you.
Councilmember Baggett.
Well, I, as your representative of the Emergency Management Advisory Committee, or better known as EMAC, we met on October 11th, and the biggest topic of discussion on this entire meeting was centered around dam safety. That's D-A-M, safety. As requested by the King County Council, there were several issues that were made that this, this is something that's, has not been performed in a very long time, to determine the, the ownership of all of the dams in our King County area, but also to perform the, the actual structural analysis and studies of the condition of these dams, because, you know, you're also looking at updating the inundation maps in the event of a rupture or break of one of those dams. We all have heard of levies breaking across the nation and when they've had exposure to these big storms. I'm sure dams were considered in some of those analysis as well. We have the Howard Hansen Dam up the road ways, that is the one that would concern us the most, certainly, and the Mud Mountain Dam, that's another one for the King County area. Those are the two probably most significant ones that are not only possible but probable for if we were to suffer a major earthquake in this area or region. So this is something that the Advisory Committee is taking seriously, and we've initiated some activity to have those studies performed as soon as possible. Along the same lines of that, I just wanted to remind everybody that this coming Thursday, the city is going to take part in a 2017 Great Shakeout Drill, starting at about 10 minutes to nine in the morning. It'll be about a three-hour drill that will activate our EOC, our Emergency Operations Center, as well as the interface with the Division Operations Centers located around us in different regional areas. So this is very important, but I do not believe that everybody has to do the drop, cover, and shake kind of a, I'm sorry, drop, cover, and hold, kind of like those ones you remember we used to do as kids and we were talking about the Cold War. Kick, if you will. Just make sure what you're under is very substantial. Anyway, I think we all know what would happen if we had a major earthquake in our area. We've already had a few shakers, and we just want to encourage all the city staff to join our emergency management team to take part in this drill.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
Thank you, Mayor. On Thursday, October 5th, I attended the Puget Sound Regional Council's Growth Management Policy Committee, and we approved for, to send out for public comment, the draft of the Centers Framework Resolution that we've been working on for the better part of this year. And this Centers Framework becomes important, as you'll find out a little bit later in my report at another committee, but it's how we delegate and decide what money goes where amongst the cities and counties that are members of PSRC, which is a four-county organization. But in short, the features of this draft Centers Framework that's going out for public comment is that it's going to encourage larger centers to plan for greater growth by establishing different types of regional growth centers. It'll create a new path to designate manufacturing industrial centers. Closest one to us right now is Kent's, and then the other one in Sumner-Algonha, or Sumner Pacific, excuse me. Retain the existing centers, but provide an additional option to achieve new or revised minimum standards. We've ran into problems in the past years on that. Recommend recognizing the role that major military installations play in achieving Vision 24 updates. And then create minimum standards to designate countywide centers in each county. So that's been a year's worth of work. It's out for public comment now. Then on Wednesday, October 11th, I attended Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee, and under New Business, I told you that the proposed 2018 legislative agenda will be voted on at PIC next month. So that places upon us next week to review their proposed legislative agenda. I will tell you that it is almost identical to last year's legislative agenda, because everything in both Washington's, both Olympia and Washington, DC, proceed at glacial speeds. So we've just cleaned up the language, shortened the presentation, it's, all, all four agenda matters are on one page, so it should be very good to lobby with that. Then on Thursday, October 12th, I attended the Puget Sound Regional Council's Project Selection Task Force. This is where the stuff that the Growth Management Policy Board is working on, center definitions, comes into play. Now then, the, there's about $203 million of funding that's spent across all four counties that has to be divided up in this recommendations that this task force will provide. And in the past years, Auburn's been very, very good at working with this. In fact, last year, we received about two and three-quarter million dollars in preservation funding for our roads and $700,000 in safety and efficiency funding. I'm looking over at Ingrid because that, that's my minder. She, she advises me on the technical stuff, because I don't build things, but I, I do know where to find excellent advice. But about a quarter of that $203 million goes to preservation, and Auburn does quite well in that. And so both in deciding how to align ourselves with the Centers Framework and how to score well in the selection process, so that next year we'll be at least hopefully as successful as this year's in achieving money for preservation and safety enhancements from the federal government. So, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Wagner.
I attended the Puget Sound Regional Council's Transportation Policy Board on October 12th. It focused on the Transportation 2040 Update Chapter that will deal with vehicle emissions and their effects as greenhouse gases, as well as their effects on particulates and health. And they have a, the Regional Council has a very robust modeling capability, so they're able to say, how much difference would it make if, if all the diesel trucks were taken out the road? Or how much difference would it make if everybody converted to electric vehicles? So they came back with a lot of suggestions about how much we could do with various changes, but conversion to electric vehicles is by far, by far, the biggest opportunity. It can reduce these gases by 40%, or other approaches are in the less than 10% approach. So electrical vehicle encouragement, and the way they said that cities might start thinking about that is through zoning, through readily available charging stations, and they listed off a number of things that cities could do to encourage the conversion to electric vehicles. Of course, the main thing is putting the price up and down to where we can afford them, but that's beginning to happen. So, anyway, I think that's, that's going to be part of what's in the update to the transportation plan.
Councilmember Wagner, if you remember, about six years ago, I think it was, Director Snyder brought forward a, an option for us to put in charging stations, electric charging stations in the downtown core. It might have been longer ago than that, but, but there has been discussion about that in the past. Councilmember Decorse.
Thank you, Mayor. On September 27th, I attended the King County Regional Transit Committee meeting. The key items in that meeting were three action items related to three proposed ordinances and a briefing on what's called Community Connections, which was the former Alternative Services Program. And I'll just briefly go over the ordinances. For the Community Connections or any other information related to RTC, I invite you all to go to the King County website under Regional Transit Committee, and there you can find the documents that were addressed at the Regional Transit Meeting on the 27th, including a nice little slide protection, slide presentation on the Community Connections program. So I won't take the time to go through that tonight, and also provide that to councilmembers here as we go forward. The three ordinances, Proposed Ordinance 2017-0350, was an ordinance that would eliminate zone and peak fare differentials in Metro Transit fares. So what this ordinance would do is to adopt the elimination zone and peak differential pricing to create a flat adult fare of $2.75. Right now, there's a different range of fares. It would also increase the cap on human, on the Human Services Ticket Program and allow for the elimination of the $3 fee for the regional transit, regional reduced fare permits and reduce the ORCA card fee from $5 to $3. And apparently, it costs, the, the cost of the ORCA card is $6. So we're looking at ways of getting the ORCA card even made cheaper with the, where they go with that. So the ordinance was passed, and what it will do is establish the $2.75 flat adult fare that'll take place on July 1st, 2018, and rising fares by 25 cents for off-peak hours and reducing fares by 50% for those that take two-zone trips, so one bus, two buses. And the fares for youth, seniors, and people with disabilities, and those making less than 200% of the poverty, poverty limit would not change. So that ordinance was passed, it is now forwarded to King County Council for final adoption. The second one is Ordinance 2017-0352. This ordinance would increase the total discount that was provided under the program to distribute discounted fare media to human service agencies. So what this does, it provides a annual subsidy for transit tickets through Human Services, the Human Services Ticket Program by $400,000, beginning in 2018, for a total annual subsidy of $4 million. So this results in a $400,000, estimated $400,000 less in revenue for Metro, but would increase the value of subsidized tickets, the value for the human services agencies to purchase for their clients by 11%. And this proposal is part of the entire package for the fare-related ordinances that are monitored by the King County Executive. Third is the Ordinance Number 2017-0354, that would allow for the fee or the reduced fare permit for seniors and people with disabilities to no more than $3. This ordinance allows Metro to waive the administrative fee charged to seniors and people with disabilities who obtain ORCA cards, who qualify for them on discounted fares and regular transit service, and this would cost Metro $75,000 annually while saving $3 for each individual qualified rider. So this is a good program overall. So again, I invite you to go to the website and take a further look at those. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And there, very briefly, on Friday, the 29th of September, I attended the All Day Association Washington City's Board of Directors Meeting, and I'll just highlight two particular areas. One was a review of the 2016 audited financial statements, which if, Bill, you're probably familiar with this with NLC, but it's quite a process when you're looking at AWC's financial statements, and they come in a packet about two inches thick, so we did have to review each one of those, but we had a briefing on that overall and the IRS process that goes along with it. The key discussion that took place for quite a while during the day was the The key discussion that took place for quite a while during the day was the 2018 legislative priorities. And I believe AWC has sent out via email to the council, other than all council members, the legislative priorities for 2018. If not, we'll go back and look at it. So I'm not going to go through each one, but if you have any questions related to those, and as we go into our legislative process through the council for our study session, we'll bring those forward for review as well through AWC's review of the 2018 legislative priorities. And that's my report.
Thank you. All right, so there are some common themes in a lot of what we've been doing recently. One of mine, let's see, where do I start here on this? Last week, on the 12th, there was, Governor Inslee held a town hall meeting up at Green River College, and it was on climate. And it was in the Lynn Bloom Student Union Center, and it was a packed room with students from Green River College who were interested in the environment. And as most of you probably know, Governor Inslee is very high on climate opportunities for improving our climate, along with carbon taxes and other things that he talked about. But as I was sitting there, Councilmember Wagner, I was thinking about our environmental park zone and what we might be able to do in that arena now that we can, now that we can look at what type of initiatives could, and incentives could be put into place. So I think it's very timely discussion and the job growth that can occur with that type of growth and incentive. So very timely for that. And today, we had a meeting with John Robert Smith of Transportation for America to be talking about, it's, it's a membership-based organization, and so clearly there was, there was a sale going on for us to become members of Transportation for America. But there was a lot of good information shared. And one of the, one of the pieces of information was about the target grants that, or the, excuse me, the Tiger Grants that are available at the federal level. And Mr. Smith was telling us that right now, the Senate version of funding the Tiger Grants is significantly more favorable than the House. In fact, the House, I believe, is almost non-existent. But that the Senate had a significant amount of funding in there, and that would certainly be beneficial to us. And he was reminding that we all have a role to play, and we have an impact, especially at the local level. And at that local level, the impact comes from telling our stories. And so he was asking me today about what are, what are your stories? What is your vision for your city? And what is the vision for transportation in the area? And so we had a really good discussion about our infrastructure. The fact that for years, nobody wanted to pay for infrastructure, and so we have a decline in the quality and the pavement condition index for cities, but also the vision for transit-oriented development and mass transit and how that is, we can't build our way out of the congestion by building more roads. There simply isn't enough available land to do so. And so mass transit is the way that we need to be looking for the future to ensure that we have the ability to move around. And I shared with him the Vision 2040 belief that there will be a million new people in the, in the Puget Sound region by 2040, and the fact that, I believe, 40 percent of that growth has already occurred, and we are nowhere near close to 2040. So we do have to be looking at our investment for the future for transportation needs. And it was a very interesting conversation. I'm glad he was here. We'll have to look at whether we want to become members of that, or do we tell our own story? Or do we become part of a, of an organization that will help us tell the story? So I'll be sharing information once they provide it to us on, on what the costs and the benefits are. But it was a good conversation. Lots of other meetings throughout the last couple of weeks, but I will refrain from those. And just as a reminder to council, that I sent out an email last week that asked that you provide us, provide me with your preferences for appointments to Sound Cities Association Boards and Commissions for next year so that we can put in one comprehensive application to SCA. And I believe that due date is coming up shortly. So I have received information from Councilmember Pelosi, but for the rest of you, I encourage you to, I, I don't believe Councilmember Wagner has to be part of that this time, unfortunately. But for the rest of you, I encourage you to get that in before the deadline so that we can submit as one comprehensive package. Mr. City Attorney, do we have need for a closed or an executive session?
No, we do not, Your Honor.
We are adjourned. Thank you.